Okay.
Okay, and okay, we can go ahead and proceed.
Great, we have convened out of closed session, no reportable items. That brings us to our regular calendar, and I am looking for any public comments on items that are not on the agenda.
Carrie? I am looking, and at this time, I do not see any raised hands, so there are no public comments.
Okay, I am then turning to directors and general managers announcements. Ben, anything from you?
I don't have any this evening, President Kohler.
Okay, board members, any announcements?
I got one.
Excellent.
Grace and I have completed our COVID shots in our two week after, so we are good to go. And I actually went to lunch last week at the Clermont Country Club, and I had a dinner party, all vaccinated people on Saturday night. So life is returning to normal.
Congratulations, glad to hear it.
It's a wonderful thing to get the two shots. It's, Ben and I were talking today about it, and I don't know if you all saw his note, but he believes that the board members can qualify under the emergency response activities of what haven't already gotten your shots. So I think you should take that up. That means you can click on the emergency responder, a portion of the of the stuff and and get your shots.
I'll also add, last night, Carrie and I were at the San Rafael City Council meeting, where Carrie did a great presentation on on the drought and our drought response. So I think it was really well received, and it was a much needed message to that group. So Carrie, great job.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Any other board announcements? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have none.
Okay, and Larry Bragman, anything?
Nothing much, gotten a bunch of signs out. Had a little open time talk with the Fairfax Council. Carrie is working with the town to see if we can save them some water. So you know, my plan is just to kind of hop to each of the towns in my division and, you know, kind of try to get them tuned up. But you know, so it's all, it's all moving forward, I think. And I'm glad we kind of got an early start on getting the word out. So.
I think.
You missed Pam Miggs. Pam Miggs, you missed her. She needs a sign. She sent me an email.
I'm gonna get her a sign tomorrow. I just, Terry just dropped off another couple dozen, so.
Good, good.
That's great.
Think you should give the signs to all the directors, because I'm getting pressure too. And I think you should hit all the cities with signs.
We're gonna keep on our agenda, Larry. This is just the time for director's announcements.
We will have further drought discussion.
We will, we definitely will. I am adhering to the Brown Act tonight. I will just add as another one last announcement. Genie's been doing a great job getting the word out about Marin's voluntary efforts, and I had a lot of fun today heading up to the watershed to meet with a reporter from ABC Seven. I understand that the they did a piece. I didn't have a chance to see it, so maybe I'll ask. I'm sure that's something you'll send around later, Genie, but.
Yeah, it was really great, actually. Thank you. Thanks for tag teaming.
Absolutely. It was, it was, it was fun, and it was good that he was interested. And I think there's a lot of me gesturing at the empty reservoir. And me agreeing that it was time to take action. But anyway, so I just want to let you all know that we did that. Okay, that brings us to the consent calendar, and I'm looking for a motion.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
We'll call.
I just have a question, Ben, on the Portius project. Is he there?
Yeah.
Okay, did they, have they done anything to regrade the area, the construction area? I haven't seen it.
Mike, are you aware?
For me, I'll look into that, Larry.
Yeah, take a look. I'll look at it next time I'm up there. But it was quite a scene. So it was heavy duty work. So it needed a little TLC.
Let's take a look.
Okay, so do we have any public, before we vote, do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
Seeing no hands, there are none.
Okay, then we just need a roll call void on that, on that motion.
Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Gibson?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
Director Schmidt?
Aye.
And President Kohler?
Aye. That brings us to our regular calendar and the drought update, and this is an information item. There's not, there's no need for a vote for any approval. Okay.
What was that? Okay, good evening, board members. Lucy Croy, I'm gonna show my screen. All good? Okay. So we're going to give an update tonight on the drought. Up first, I have a picture of Phoenix Lake. This was taken last week when the lake had just about hit 50% capacity. This is one of our reservoirs that we're using as part of the drought response, that's rarely used otherwise. So tonight, we're going to give an update of water supply conditions and drought conditions. And then give an update on drought response, including the operational initiatives and water supply projects, public outreach and communications, and then further our discussion from last board meeting on the consideration of mandatory restrictions, and finish off with a discussion on the financial impacts of drought. So first up is a discussion on water supply. So up here, I have the the total reservoir storage chart. That's very familiar at this point. And really, what I wanted to call out was that over the past few months since January, we've really been staying very steady at around 45,000 acre feet. We've been hovering here, and this is about 55% of our total capacity. Right now, as you can see, we're about 39%, if I can show my pointer. Sorry. It's harder to see the colors on this one, but this is the average, the gray line, and we are the green right now. And as of today's date, we're at 44,000 acre feet, and that difference is about 39%. Moving into rainfall, in February, we received about two inches of rain total, bringing our total for the fiscal year to 19 inches so far. That's tracking at about 44% of average. So we've stayed pretty steady along those lines. Last February, the yellow line over here, this, this was the driest February we had had on record with .01 inches. We did a little bit better this year. But those impacts of having such a dry February has severely hit our storage, as you can see. Now, at our monthly potable water store, monthly potable water production for February, we did have a decrease. The green is 2021, so this is February 2021. We see this mainly as a variability in our weather pattern. February has tended to vary quite a bit over the years, especially the last five years. I looked back at some rainfall records just to check and see how variable it had been. And interestingly enough, the blue, the blue bar and the gray bar, so 2017 and 2019, when we had a little bit less, less water demand, we had 26 inches of rain both years. And then in the higher years, we had about one, one inch of rain in 2018. And then last year was driest February on record with .01 inch. And then this year, we had about two inches of rain. So as the season variability studies out over the summer, we hope to use production as a way to track actual savings of our conservation efforts, along with consumption. So along with demand from our, from our customer meters, as well as AMI meters. So we'll bring that data back as it becomes more normalized through the summer months that you see up here. So then moving into the running 12-month potable water production chart, what I wanted to point out here was primarily about the the peak we hit was in January, and we started to drop off just this February, and that's primarily due to the the less water that we produced that I just mentioned. And then really looking back, looking at the conservation efforts that we've had over the past few droughts, and really how much impact that's had. We've got 2013. See if my pointer, I don't know if there's my pointer showing up. So you can see that that drop, that drop was quite significant, and then also in the 90s. So those, those conservation efforts can have quite a, quite an impact on our production. Looking forward, this chart looks at our projected reservoir storage through April 22. The black line is our actual reservoir storage that we've been, that we've had out at the reservoirs, so starting in January 2020, right here. This is the line that we've been tracking along. And then at this point, just coming into March, it breaks into multiple different directions, and that's really showing the different ways that we can go depending on rainfall. So what we've been tracking most closely has been this dashed blue line, and that that is a 50% rainfall, 50% of average rainfall projection. That projection really puts us at around 25,000 acre feet come December 1st. And then, and as I mentioned before, the rainfall that we've had through, through the middle of March, we're at about 44%. So we've been tracking a little bit under this dashed blue line. And then just above it, I have a solid blue line, and that's that is another projection with an assumed 25% of conservation effort thrown out towards April 2022. And that's, that's really to show the significant impact that conservation effort can have on our reservoir storage and extending our supply into the future. We expect, with the consideration of mandatory, mandatory restrictions, that this line would start to creep upwards as well. So at this point, I will move into discussing a bit more of our drought response. So, and giving updates on the operational initiatives and water supply projects. So another picture of Phoenix Lake. This one taken from the sky, actually. This one shows, this one was taken just around the same time. And this one actually shows the Phoenix barge pump. So this is the pump that pumps water up to our bond temper treatment plant. The Phoenix Lake is one of our rarely used lakes that we've been using over the past month, primarily because of the drought conditions, and it's a very highly visible lake within our watershed, so really getting the communication out to the community about drought conditions. Right now, the lake is down about 15, about 15 and a half feet, and we're expecting at this point to take it down to 17 feet or so. Sulu Huli Reservoir, we, we will be moving forward with renting a rental generator out for that reservoir, and staff have been working on preparations to, to get that generator mobilized and out there, as well as getting facilities operational in the next month. Our supplemental supply has, has been front loaded throughout the year. As of just about mid-March, we've hit just over 100% mark of our normal annual take from our imported supply. So that really goes to show how aggressively we've been trying to take our imported supply and, and extend our local. The recycled water treatment plant's upgrade is still ongoing. We've been in continual, continual correspondence with Los Coinas Valley Sanitary District. And just as of today, they started distributing batch, batch testing water and sending it out to our, to the distribution system for distinct time periods. So we're hoping that it'll be fully functional probably in the next few weeks. And then with leak detection, we have been continuing to look into advancements with that program and meet with external consultants and talk about how, ways that we can expand or improve that program, as well as meeting with a local collaboration with other agencies in the, in the Bay Area.
Lucy, before you go on, can we go back to leak detection for a minute? Not that that's gonna solve all of our problems, but I'm just wondering, the, the state mandate that water, that municipal water utilities, you know, really take, you know, pretty aggressive action on leak detection, that's been around now for, I want to say, at least five years, maybe longer. Would you say that, you know, do you have any, you know, just ballpark estimate about how well we're doing? I mean, because obviously, there's both the operation side leaks, and then there's the consumer side leaks. And, you know, it would just be great to hear how you think we're doing so far, given that, given that SB 555 mandate.
Yeah, and Carrie, feel free to add in too. I think historically, we've, it's always a mix of actual leak, and then also how accurate your calculations are and your meters are. And, and I think our, our projections moving forward, we're actually doing pretty well. Carrie, can you speak to what the, what it is? Yeah, so the state had, you know, the, the regulations have not been finalized, so the current graph shows us how we have a requirement of 24.9 gallons per connection per day, or it might be 24.5, but it's one of those two. And last year, we hit that number. And so, you know, based on the most recent reporting, we would be compliant. There does require annual reporting, and you know, it's obviously with with water loss, you need that continued investment to maintain that level of, of loss that ensures we are compliant. And so we're really looking at what other options that we might have, and whether there are opportunities there might be for us to pursue during this drought.
Okay, but I mean, my, my sense is that if we're hitting our numbers, you know, we're, we're unlikely to be losing an enormous amount of water at this point through leaks still. I know that the, the average is right around 10%. You think that still holds? We might be doing a little better?
I don't know. I, you know, I mean, I've been looking at it as gallon per connection per day, not necessarily a percentage. Although in our urban water management plan, they, they are running the historic percentage as a, as an indicator. So I think it was around 10%.
All right. It's not gonna solve all of our problems. It's just one of those things that's relatively easy to do.
Yeah, if I could chime in here. So the target from the state of 24.5 gallons per connection per day works out to a a leak loss of 1.5 million gallons per day. Now, when you think of it in millions of gallons, that's a lot of water. Still, that's well below, you know, it's around 10%. Daily demand can, of course, fluctuate depending if it's summer or winter. But we're keeping up with that targeted leak loss rate by, you know, investing in leak detection and making sure that we, when we get emergency leaks, that we repair them in a timely manner. So.
Great, thanks. Okay.
Lucy, could I just ask real quickly, are we monitoring water quality at Sulu Huli?
Yes, we are monitoring water quality. Paul, can you, is there anything specifically? We have ongoing water quality that goes out very frequently.
Yes, Sulu Huli is monitored the same as the other lakes. We don't treat it any differently from a monitoring perspective in terms of water quality.
Are we testing for methyl mercury?
Well, methyl mercury is generally not actually in the water. It tends to be in the bioaccumulate. So it's in the sediments rather than in the water column itself.
Okay, have we tested for it?
Yeah, we have. We've done, as you know, I think, extensive studies on, on methyl mercury out at Sulu Huli.
Okay.
aqueous phase methyl mercury, it's super low concentrations, you know, .004 or 5 nanograms per liter. It's, it's hard to detect in, in the water.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, moving into our water supply projects that are ongoing as part of this drought response. We have the Castania Pump Station Rehab. That is a project that's looking at alternatives for rehabbing or repairing that pump station, getting online to increase the supply from our, for our imported supply. That project will be coming back to the board on the next, the next board meeting, April 6th, with preliminary recommendation. Environmental releases, we're looking very high level, very early stage, any modifications. Will be taped. That actually is going to the watershed committee this Thursday for a discussion piece on a technical analysis, March 18th. Background, just considering and continuing to have conversations about multi-year drought projects, long-term water supply projects, if dry conditions were to persist through the next fall/winter, and how would we go, go about that? So at this point, I'm going to hand it off to Genie to give an update on our public outreach and communications efforts.
Thank you, Lucy. So we want to share with you just briefly a high-level look at some of our outreach communications in terms of the drought response. So you might remember this slide from the last meeting, and we think it's a really nice way to capture not only what's ongoing, but some of the initiatives that we have coming up. So since our last meeting, we were able to distribute more than 130 yard signs. And if any of the board members are interested in yard signs, we can definitely coordinate with Terry, and we're happy to get them to you. So just connect with her, and we'll make that happen. We also launched our Marin Water e-newsletter, and we reached about 22,000 recipients. So that was great. And we, of course, as Cynthia mentioned earlier, continue to get great media coverage. You may have seen President Kohler's op-ed this past Sunday, an accompanying editorial, and the ABC Seven piece was also really nice, all around conservation. And that's really, really helpful in getting the word out. So in terms of targeted outreach, we have started reaching out to stakeholder groups, to city and town councils and neighborhood associations. So we're really trying to get out there in the community. And in addition to that, we're connecting with our stakeholder partners to see if we can get the word out to their membership. For example, Fire Safe Marin featured an article on conservation in their newsletter that just went out today. So that's really helpful as well. So coming up next, we have, of course, our public awareness education campaign, advertising campaign. You're gonna see more drought-related signage on the watershed going up, and we'll continue to work on those presentations and our school materials as well. Okay, Lucy. So I just wanted to share briefly a quick look here at a social media advertising campaign that we ran. It was a short campaign, but it was very effective. We ran a Facebook and Instagram campaign on conservation, and within the first five days or so, we started seeing a real spike there. So within a week, we reached more than 20,000 people on social, and that's, that's a really great number. And I just actually checked this evening, and between the time I did this and tonight, that number actually jumped to 24,000. So happening there is, even though the ad has run its course, because we managed to reach such a high number, that ad is being shared. And the shares are what we're seeing that's really keeping the messaging going. So that's just a really great example of a small effort that can really make a big difference, I think. We also launched our first Marin Water e-newsletter. That was lots of fun. We reached 22,000 people. We have a really healthy open rate of 37%. So for our industry, it's between 28 and 30%. So we were glad to see that. Of course, we've got some work to do in terms of the content and making sure that we see a stronger click-through. Our click-through rate was about 10%, which is about average. So in addition to that, we continue to work on our public awareness and conservation advertising campaign, and we'll keep you informed as that comes together. And in terms of media, since the initial drought declaration about a month ago on February 16th, we've logged more than 20 print, broadcast, and digital reports on conservation. So that's a really healthy number. In addition to the external communications, we really want to take the time to communicate with our staff internally. So we've been having meetings with different work groups to make sure that they're informed as well. So if they encounter customers or get questions that we all understand what's happening, and we are delivering a consistent message, of course. So those meetings included the Water Quality Lab, meter readers, customer service, of course, the watershed, and Water Efficiency and Communications, of course, meets weekly. We want to make sure that we're consistent, but also adjusting the message as we go based on what we're seeing out in the field there. We talked a little bit about some of those stakeholder presentations, and those are coming along really nicely. And we're gonna make sure to notify the board when you're in your area, if you want to join us for these meetings. You see that we just presented to the city of San Rafael last night. I heard that went really well. And we've got some other meetings coming up with the town of Corder Madera. Marin County Schools, we're meeting with their facilities group, and there the focus will really be irrigation and trying to curb that outdoor water use. So we'll be sure to keep the board informed as those meetings are booked. We actually just booked Tiburon Rotary today as well. Thank you, Lucy. So I just wanted to share some water efficiency metrics. So since we declared drought in February, so for the past four weeks, our water efficiency team has received 215 calls and emails. And just to give you a little bit of context, normally, they get about 150 calls. What is really interesting to us is in the last week alone, this past week, they received more than 100 of those calls. So it's about 115 calls in the last week. And that's a really good sign that our messaging is starting to take hold. So we're really happy to see those numbers. In terms of rebates and water efficiency programs, they had six smart irrigation controller rebates and 20 inquiries for lawn replacements. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Carrie to talk about mandatory measures.
Thank you, Genie. Good evening, Board. Carrie Pollard, Water Efficiency Manager. So tonight, I'm going to cover the mandatory reduction program that staff has developed and that we have been working on over the last few weeks for your consideration. So this, of course, is continuing to evolve, and we will welcome all of your, your input as, as we progress. These mandatory measures would, would be in addition to the voluntary response that we're already asking our customers to, to engage with us on. And of course, it will be dependent on weather, right? So, you know, we're planning for the worst and hoping for the best, that we do get some rain, some of those miracle marches we've seen in the past. So what we have here is an outline of what a mandatory reduction program may look like. We'll start from the top with targeting landscape irrigation. So we know that peak summer demand is a real opportunity for us to get significant water savings in our, in our community and in our service area. And I have a couple of slides on kind of diving into the details of what, you know, that landscape restrictions may look like. But before we go there, I want to also talk a little bit about voluntary indoor water saving. So, so currently, we, we continue to push our indoor messaging, providing tips and resources for customers. If and when we go to mandatory, that messaging will continue. So we acknowledge not all of our customers have landscaping that they can reduce their water use through, right? So we also continue to work with our customers and provide resources and tips for, for indoor water savings as well. I mean, we feel that that's, that's very important to make it a community effort. So not only landscaping and indoor water use, but looking at water waste prohibition. So we currently have extensive water waste prohibition in place. Those will remain and may, you know, see some slight edits depending on the direction we go in. But we will also look to expand them to include items like refilling or putting restrictions on refilling pools with either makeup water or, or, you know, pool fill. to include items like refilling or putting restrictions on refilling pools with either makeup water or, you know, pool filling. And not only pools, but hot tubs and water features as well. We also would expand the prohibitions to prohibit potable water for washing cars, prohibit power washing of buildings and homes, and finally, put additional restrictions on the hydrant meter use permits, which would limit potable water hydrant use to activities or uses where recycled water cannot be used. Meaning, you know, currently, we have hydrant meters out in the field that are used for dust control and compaction, you know, at construction sites, and really, recycled water can be used for those functions. And so we would pull back those hydrant meters potentially, and then reissue them and recycled water hydrant meters. So they can still continue doing the work they need to do, but not use potable water when it's not necessary. And so, of course, all of these, you know, the details of each of these items would be brought back to the board for your consideration. But this is kind of, you know, some of our initial thoughts. Next slide.
Carrie, before you go on, do you have an estimate, like with these three sort of first, you know, categories? Do you have any, you know, again, just very ballpark estimates about what you would expect to be conserving, you know, with all of these things in place?
That's a great question. That's a great segue.
It is the question, I think.
You want to go to the next slide, Lucy? Okay, so what we've done is in looking at, you know, this idea about targeting landscape irrigation and taking the feedback that we received from the board last week, and acknowledging that irrigation is just a component of the savings we'll see, we have done some analysis, and it does factor in a some reduction in indoor use as well. Although the primary, as we know, right, peak demand is really where we're going to get the majority of our savings. So we do have some saving estimates here that have been provided. So again, this is something the board saw last board meeting, and we took your feedback and incorporated an additional one day a week of irrigation. And so we've kind of, you know, dropped the bookends, but we want to keep them up for discussion if needed. But we really wanted to provide some more additional details and information on what one day a week irrigation might look like and two-day-a-week irrigation. So we have the savings listed there. And in addition to this table, I wanted to walk the board through a little bit more detail on what a rollout of one of these programs may actually look like.
Just so that I understand, before you leave that, can you go back to that slide for a second? So saving up to 6,000 acre feet, going to two days per week irrigation, that's over just the summer months. That's not the whole year.
It's, this calculation is from May through October.
May through October. Okay, great. So and when you say saving that much, that would be compared to what we would normally expect to be used in the district during that same time period, right?
Yeah, it's actually in comparison to what we used last year.
Last year. Okay, got it. Even better.
And so I wanted to provide an example of what one day a week irrigation might look like so that we can kind of start to wrap our heads around, you know, what would the impact be to the community and how would this be rolled out? So this is an example, again, of one day a week of watering. There would be no irrigation allowed on Saturday or Sunday. And each, you know, community, town, neighborhood, et cetera, would have its own specific watering day. It would, you know, if you're in Mill Valley, you would only be able to irrigate on Monday. And you would still have to adhere to the irrigation prohibitions, meaning of watering times, meaning no watering, you know, during the heat of the day. So between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM, there would be no irrigation. If the board decided to go down this path with a two-day-a-week watering schedule, we would go through the same process and rework this and, you know, make it so that every community and neighborhood, town, et cetera, would have two days a week available to them for irrigation. The value in doing this or the benefit of having this type of model, it makes it, you know, easier for our customers to understand, and helps them help us with enforcement. And it allows us, it kind of simplifies patrols, right? So we can only, we would be not needing to drive over the entire service area if it was an odd even, you know, breakout of ours address, we can kind of focus in on areas that we know should not be irrigating on specific days.
So Carrie, that looks like it makes a lot of sense to me, again, if we have to go there. I noticed that it says irrigation prohibited between 9:00 and 7:00. Does that mean that even on days when you would be restricted from irrigating, that you could nevertheless irrigate after 7:00?
If you were in Mill Valley, for example, you would be able to irrigate on Monday from midnight to 9:00 AM.
Got it. Okay.
And/or after 7:00 PM. The irrigation prohibited, the prohibited irrigation during 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM is actually currently within our code. It's currently on the books. We would keep that. Next slide.
Carrie, do you intend to use the AMI as a means of enforcement?
That is, that's an excellent question. Staff has thought about that. And we've also taken into consideration, while it might be a tool we can use because it's not widespread throughout the district, you know, there's a little bit of fairness and such that would need to be taken into consideration. But we would, we would use all the tools that we had available.
Yeah, I mean, like in Tiburon, there's many more. So I don't mean it so much as a hammer as a tool, you know, to say, look, you know, your water usage is high, so something's going on here at night. Thank you for watering at night, but you shouldn't be watering at all.
Yeah, that's, and it would also help with enforcement. We wouldn't have to do patrols in those areas. And, you know, as you saw, we'd be doing patrols Monday through Friday and probably on the weekend as well. So yeah, that would assist. Okay, so we wanted to include a slide on enforcement. So if the board decides to enact mandatory measures, they could be rolled into the prohibitions that are currently in place. And then the same enforcement mechanism could be utilized. So I wanted to take a moment to walk through what that current enforcement mechanism is. So what we do is we have an initial water waste notification. It is either a door hanger and/or a written notification. So if we leave a door hanger, we acknowledge that the wind could blow it away. Or, you know, we could, if it's a long driveway, we could put it in the wrong fence or the wrong gate. Or, you know, if there's a dog off or issues with door hangers, but we still will utilize them. But we will also send a written notification for every site that does get left a door hanger. If we get a subsequent notification for the same type of water waste at the same address, we'll send a second written warning. And this written warning, it's written within our code that staff actually needs to go out and verify that the water waste issue has been corrected. If the customer does not reach out to us to set up the site visit to verify the correction within 15 days, then we would issue a notice of violation. And that would result in, again, a written notification, certified letter to the customer, and a fine. And you can see there that the code has defined as $250, which would appear on their water bill. So that's the information that I had to present to you this evening. Of course, we'll take any input you may have, or I could just turn it over to Ben to finish up the presentation. That's his question.
Okay, do a couple more slides and we'll move on this. The on Carrie's piece, before I get into these, we are interested if the board has a sense there, you know, at this point, on were we to go to mandatory? Does two days a week? Does one day a week feel right? But we'll get through this and open it up. So financial impact of drought. So we have shown the board a couple of times the impact from the voluntary conservation actions that are underway now. It's really a two-part projected reduction in revenue based on 20% reduced demand with conservation over that eight-month periods, approximately $8 million. And then about $4.5 million made up of unbudgeted expenditures dominated by increasing our supplemental supply beyond the minimum that we have budgeted, and also the Sulholy generator rental and operation. Were we to go to mandatory, say, the approximate 40%, that number jumps up about $8 million, an additional $8 million. And that's for reflecting the further reduction in water sales due to the conservation that we'd be asking our customers to do. So there's a couple approaches for the board. We do have drought rates currently in the code that go into effect when we were to move to voluntary and mandatory that the board could decide to proceed with. Alternatively, the board could choose to defer the drought rates. And staff could monitor the actual reductions we get, the actual loss of revenue, and evaluate the need in subsequent months of do we or don't we need to implement the drought rate? So that decision would really come to the board. I suppose when we were staffed to bring the mandatory recommendation, and you'd have the decision, if we decide, if the board were to select to hold off on drought rates, my understanding is we'd have to do that formally, because otherwise, the code suggests we would. So we definitely have options on this. What's on the books? Certainly something different, or to defer and monitor the situation, covering revenues by reserves, tightening our belts, and seeing how far that can take us.
And can I ask you a quick question? You probably haven't had time to absorb this yet, but have you guys considered the funds available as a result of the Rescue Act? There was a, California, it appears to be receiving a very substantial amount of funding from the federal government specifically for water utilities. Obviously, not to deal with that, but nevertheless, it would be, you know, it is a, it is revenue that is coming in specifically for water utility operations.
We have been looking into that, President Kohler, and we plan a week from Friday, which is a rescheduled Operations Committee to provide the board an update on our grant program as well as state and federal legislation. And there's a number of areas we're going to touch on where there's opportunities to get some money to help our customers with their water bills due to COVID. One of the issues we'll talk about is in most or all of these special districts are not eligible to get the money directly. We are working with the county, and we do have a meeting scheduled. They are getting some of the money that came from the original, was it the Rescue Act? Whatever the first one was.
Right.
Yes. And then there'll be more coming from here. So we have, we've established a contact with the county. We reached out to the county administrator who asked one of his staff to work with us. And we have a meeting scheduled coming up. So hopefully.
Great. That's great. I mean, I haven't absorbed the whole act, and I don't know, other board members may have looked at it. But my understanding is that there's a lot of different pots of money. And I don't know that it matters that much who administers it, but you're right, Ben. There's money specifically for low-income and otherwise disadvantaged customers that goes right to them. So that actually, you know, eases the burden on us somewhat of, I think that's especially intended to go to, you know, bills that are delinquent or the other word that have been delayed. So that, you know, even though, you know, anyway, that will, and you're to our benefit. But then there's also, I believe, several pots of money specifically to support utilities that have been suffering revenue loss as a result of COVID.
So as next steps, of course, we're going to continue close monitoring of water supply as we bring a drought update back to each board meeting going forward, continue our outreach efforts, the operational and water supply projects, and then consider the need for mandatory restrictions. So based on the forecast of the weather, we do have a nice storm coming in tomorrow, Thursday. But after that, it's not looking too strong in terms of precipitation. So staff is anticipating, of course, hoping for the best that we won't need to. But we're anticipating the second meeting in April with the current forecast in the current water supply projections to bring a recommendation to the board for mandatory conservation action. So what we'll probably do is at the first meeting in April, bring a kind of framework and get feedback from the board on that. So we'll be able to polish it up for the second meeting in April, all of course, assuming we don't get a nice atmospheric river that just hits us for a week or 10 days and gets us out of this. Okay, with that, are there any, you manage it, questions to any of the staff that gave the update?
I'll just, I just want to just start very quickly, Ben, by thanking you and the staff. This is very comprehensive. It's exactly the, you know, the kind of planning that, you know, we expect and that we're, you know, that we all need going forward. One thing that has struck me in some of the questions from the press we've been receiving, everybody seems quite shocked that we are ahead of the curve in our planning. And I just, I've been saying to everybody, and I will share with you, that this is, this is what we do. A water, you know, we are a water agency that looks ahead. We plan. We understand that climate change is having an impact on our system. So I just really want to commend you and the team, you know, Lucy, Carrie, Jeannie, everybody. I think this was, this is exactly where we need to be right now. And these are the, these are the options we need to be considering. So those are my thoughts, and I want to open it up to the rest of the board.
Well said. Thank you.
All right. Any, any public comments on this item?
Okay.
Seeing no hands yet. No, there are none.
All right. I thought there'd be more conversation about this, but if everybody's comfortable, we can move on to our next agenda item. Let me find my thing again. Okay, item six is, this is an approval item to fill a utility crew leader position in facilities and watersheds.
Hi, good morning, good afternoon or evening, Directors. This is Crystal Yasmin, Director of System Maintenance and Natural Resources. So tonight, we have a crew leader position that'll become vacant because of a retirement. This position is in the Facilities Maintenance Group, which is in charge of essentially building maintenance, anything related to the buildings, roofs, carpets, construction, carpentry. But they also maintain pump stations and tanks. They do the painting at the tanks. These guys have quite a varied list of work on their plate. They also are the ones that go out on the boats and pull the logs off the log boom whenever we have rain events and we have buildup of logs at the lakes. So it's an important position for keeping core business going. And so there's a request here to fill the position in the Facilities Maintenance Group for crew leader.
Got it. Any board discussion on this item? Then I am looking for a motion.
A new approval. Second.
Any public comment on this item, Terry?
There are none.
All right, then. We need a roll call vote.
Director Bragman. Director Gibson.
Aye.
Director Russell. Director Schmidt. And President Kohler.
Aye. That brings us to future meeting schedule and agenda items.
Good evening. We have the watershed meeting coming up this week at 1:30, I believe, it's Thursday. And then next week, we have our three meetings. Tuesday will be our work 10-year financial plan workshop, too. And then we'll have also our Finance and Administration Committee meeting, as well as our Operations Special Meeting at the end of next week. And that's it.
Any board comment on this? Does this work for everybody?
Yep, looks for me.
All righty. Then, thank you, everybody. We are going to adjourn back to closed session.
Okay. All right. Molly, I guess I make you the host, right? Okay, so I'm going to pause the recording.
Great. We are adjourning from closed session with no reportable items, and we are now adjourned for the evening.
Very good.
Thank you, everybody.